That makes it sound more exciting when we're not on YouTube than it actually is, doesn't it?
Forever, it's a long time.
Right, we're now live.
Okay, welcome everybody to tonight's planning meeting. Is there anybody here for the public session? No, thank you. Okay, so I took my selection of chair. As I promised last year, I would step aside to let councillor Colby chair this year. He's done two years as vice chair and he's been a wonderful vice chair. So I think it's only fitting that he is proposed this year as promised. And he goes in full glory as chair of planning for the coming year. Do I have a second one? Thank you councillor Harvey, I saw your hand go first. Right, is there any other proposers for chair? No, okay, Mark, over to you.
Thank you madam chairman. Thank you, if I could just first of all say to Lisa, thank you so much Lisa for the last two years. You've done a wonderful job steering the planning committee and we have definitely moved on a lot in the town since that time, thank you, thank you so much for that.
Thank you Mark.
If I could just hand back to you for a moment Lisa, election of vice chair?
Yep, so election of vice chair, I would like to propose councillor Ralph. He did ask last year if he could be vice chair but I'd promised Mark, so again, I promised this year, as I'm stepping aside, he could be vice chair this year, so do I have a second? I take councillor Stutchbury's hand as being the first up.
It would be my greatest pleasure to second answer you, because you've been having the tender of these committee meetings and adds great value to every meeting you attend.
Yeah, okay, so any other posers, oh sorry Mark.
I'll do that, but any other proposals? Well, we have a proposer and second for councillor Anthony Ralph, all those in favour? Don't need to, it's unanimous. Thank you Anthony, I look forward to working with you over the next year.
Thank you.
Item three on the agenda, clarification of the status of this meeting, a verbal report from our town clerk, Paul Watson.
Thank you chairman, just to remind members that the full council voted and agreed for the committee, along with other committees, to change its status to become a working group. So tonight's meeting is of a working group which doesn't have the formal power to make decisions, but decision will be delegated to myself and to the planning clerk, particularly on responses, as we'll do with all of other meetings, that means we can meet online, councillors can vote and discuss things online as it's a less formal meeting. We'll carry on with the agendas and chairing, we're still going to sit understanding orders in the code of conduct. It doesn't affect the calendar of meetings, it does mean that meetings are now on YouTube and saved on YouTube afterwards in the way they were before, thank you.
Councillor Tri.
Is there a set of wording that we have to use when we agree something like we recommend this to the town clerk to action?
That's exactly the wording I would recommend, yes.
Obviously, as the town clerk said at the council meeting, which the staff helpfully put together, we must thank them for that, this will be under review at every council meeting anyway. So I think this is a temporary measure why the world moves forward, hopefully in a good direction. So I have no problem, I think we should still agree and then when the chairman should then say, the committee recommends do it that way, so there's no confusion of the wording. We agree and the chairman could then recommend the decisions, would probably be a neater way of doing it.
Thank you very much for that, anyone else? Thank you Paul then for that advice, which we will obviously follow. Item four, apologies for absence Nina, anybody?
I don't have any apologies recorded.
The one I have is apologies from councillor Maher, who will be late to the meeting, oh, he's just coming in now.
I'll just wait till he's there.
Hi Andy.
Good evening Andy, councillor Maher has just joined the meeting. We're just doing apologies for absence Andy, so you've just made it in time. Thank you, item five, declarations of interest, receive any declarations of personal or prejudicial interest under consideration on this agenda? Councillor Stutchbury?
Just to declare that I'm most likely to be doing planning, so I declare that as an interest of Buckinghamshire councillor and so that it's noted in my comments that when I don't comment, it's not because I'm not interested, it's because I have a predetermined position and I don't want to prejudice that on behalf of the town council, thank you.
Thank you councillor Stutchbury, and Robin, on behalf of the planning committee, congratulations on being re-elected to Buckinghamshire council and we will look after our interests.
You'd be assured.
Minutes of the last meeting, this is Monday 19th of April, it was put before the full council, but I had raised a correction and they were coming back to us anyway for approval. On page four of the minutes, Buckingham neighbourhood plan, Vale of Aylesbury plan report, I reported right at the end of that that we were I proposed it, it was seconded by councillor Stutchbury and agreed for the committee to work with Mays-Morton and Foscat Parish councils on a joint submission to Buckinghamshire council, insisting that section 106 application is not signed. That shouldn't read application, that should read section 106 legal agreement for Mays-Morton 006 Walnut Drive, just to be absolutely clear, is everyone happy with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
According to that, then those minutes will go back to the next council for full approval, councillor Stutchbury?
Any updates on those procedures which can be discussed tonight or are they subject, would need to be discussed elsewhere? On that application and the work of the Mays-Morton Action Group, is there something we need to know or is it going to be discussed elsewhere?
No, it has gone further than that now and I think probably if I could ask Carolyn, just to tell us where you've got on that Carolyn?
Yes, well we had a letter from Sue Pilcher saying that the agreement won't be signed without a draft copy being put before this, your council, Buckingham Town Council and indeed Mays-Morton Parish Council, which will have 10 days with which to comment. And we look at the website every day to make sure that it's not on the website, because when it goes on the website, you will have 10 days to comment. The only other update I think perhaps you might be interested to know is the documentary has now had over 6,000 views and many, a lot of interest from other residents groups who have been experiencing very similar, if not the same problems, not just with Buckinghamshire but with other councils within the country. And we are in the process of drafting a letter which will be on behalf of all residents groups in Bucks to outline what we feel this planning department should be about and not ignoring local views and working with communities rather than with developers.
Thank you Carolyn, councillor Harvey?
That's innovation, if they're going to share with us the section 106 agreement in draft form before it gets formally signed, I think we should thank Buckinghamshire council profusely for that and do whatever else we can do to reward that behaviour, so it happens again and again and again. I think it's a very positive thing.
Yep, great.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Stutchbury?
Only to say that I was going to meet earlier tonight and what's gone on in Mays-Morton has not been recognised in other parts of Buckinghamshire. That it has been noted and I think there's some synergies on these concerns and the way such actions are taken across Buckinghamshire. You are not alone, I can assure you of that, I will say no more than that now, but I think you'll find you're not alone.
I think Carolyn said that, yeah.
Thank you for that Robin, fine, are we happy for the minutes then, all those in favour? Thank you. Moving on then, item seven, Buckingham neighbourhood plan, Vale of Aylesbury plan. Catherine has provided a written report which is conjoined to my report I gave to the committee last time over the two days of hearings, thank you very much for that Catherine, you're going to much greater detail and obviously I did at the time, one of the main items on that of course was the fact that they Buckinghamshire council sprang on the meeting, particularly on the Mays-Morton working group, that the section 106 agreement was about to be signed and that caused all, that triggered all this flurry of activity which we've been talking about, but basically the inspector's now gone away to think about what we've all told him, I did put my presentation to his assistant in writing and she's acknowledged that and thanked us, thanked Buckingham Town Council for its contribution to the modification hearings. Councillor Harvey?
Do we have any idea when the inspector is going to, I don't know, make his final decision? With regards to Valp, I mean we seem to be, we seem to have been in the last chance saloon for a very, very, very long time now. I remember, I think I was taking bets about whether Valp would be accepted by March of last year, and I think I won that one. So it would be nice to know, do we have any idea of the schedule ahead?
He did indicate to the second day of the hearing that it would be a few, several months before he could come up with the complete plan, he has so much to go through and he also indicated he's also doing another local plan, so I think between the two of them, he's trying to rush everything through. Councillor Stutchbury?
I think for you chairman, as this unwinds, either to determination in favour of the Valp plan or the Valp plan being dismissed by the inspector, I think it would be well worth us looking back at the lost opportunities which were given in the Valp plan, the timeline of those lost opportunities and it's still, the very things which still resonate in my mind that when there was opportunity to amend the Valp plan to put 35% in, affordable, they chose to vote it down. And the other thing with OZI Way, when it was changed from industrial to housing, plus the simple fact that it removes areas in the town plan and it basically disregarded the town plan and everything, but I think we need to, when we make a response to it, we need to make sure that we bring all those facts and details and happenings and decisions and recommendations of this council into full bearing when we actually make a comment on it, because it will be presented a fluffy thing which has been existing since 2014, which has finally come to life. And it's really, from part two of Buckingham, it's been quite retributive and socially regressive, we could suggest, especially on affordable housing, so I think we need to look at it as it goes along and discuss it at length, but make sure our comments includes all these missed opportunities, including the Mays-Morton development and the Mays-Morton road development and the things which it's actually suggested doing, countenance against public opinion. And that's been a theme with the Valp plan all along, it's been countenance against local opinion. And that's been a, that's been, but there's been no addressing of that, even though your good self and our previous councillor Hirons did try to do your darndest to actually get those things discussed, many of them are never discussed and that is, if it goes through for approval without people's voices actually being heard at the table, it's a sour affair, a sour affair, in my view.
Yeah, I think, thank you councillor Stutchbury, we've gone as far as we can at the moment, we had one and a half full days of our presentations and our what we're saying against or in favour of the plan. The first morning was taken up by the Mays-Morton Walnut Drive plan, the second morning was taken up by that and then the Buckingham transport strategy took up the Friday afternoon, so we did have one and a half days, the inspector certainly heard us. I think we did this time get our money's worth, I'm sure Carolyn will agree with that, but you know, there's not much more we could say, everyone was heard this time, even though he was trying to hurry it up a little bit as we got to six o'clock on the Friday night, but he showed more staying power this time than he did in July 2018 and I feel from Buckingham Town Council's point of view that we were heard fairly. Carolyn, did you feel that you got your money's worth?
Yes, I certainly did, I think he was at, took some trouble to make sure that we were fully heard. And whether that's a good thing or not, we'll wait and see, but we can't complain that our voices were not heard. In fact, the only thing was Susan Ornsby, the QC president, tried to sort of cut us off at one point, but he wouldn't have any of it. So good for the inspector.
Councillor Stutchbury?
I can concur with what you said about that hearing, but nevertheless, the affordability numbers never got discussed and they weren't discussed now. So we've got all the way to the end of the Valp plan possibly getting agreement with only 25% affordable in what is the prime development area, according to Whitehall. And that is going to be a burden, the next generation for the foreseeable future to the Buckinghamshire plan comes into action. It's a developer's charter really, isn't it? And you did your best and it's no criticism of you chairman, but that never got to, never got to be discussed and and it's, that's why it's socially oppressive.
Thank you councillor Stutchbury, yes in fact regarding the affordable housing, we did before the, these amendments, modifications, ask again if we could be heard and the answer came back no. And during the hearings, the inspector also refused to hear any presentations whatsoever on the healer figures, he said that was done and dusted as far as he was concerned and he was only interested in what was on the table before him. So we had no chance to expand on that. Anyone else got any comments on that? Catherine, thank you very much for the report, it's very helpful, I think we need to keep that as a model and move that into our next meeting of the neighbourhood plan so that we can draw on a lot of those comments that were made. Thank you.
Item eight, chairman, can I just raise, sorry, one point on the neighbourhood plan? Just to note that we did have the working group for the neighbourhood plan booked in to meet this Wednesday. We're going to have to postpone that for a couple of weeks to find a date that's convenient for all members of the group now. But we'll confirm that to you by email.
I think we're going to be pretty busy on Wednesday now, aren't we, with the town meeting? Thank you, item eight then, which is action reports, that should actually read eight one and eight two, not seven one and seven two. Is there anything on there which is to comment on? No, everyone happy with that? Okay, thank you for that Catherine.
Oh, John Harvey's got a hand.
Yep.
Just one thing, I wondered what's happening about the questions for the, that we talked about, for the consultation.
Well, they're for a final discussion at the working group, when the working group next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, anything else? No, item eight two then, to agree a Buckingham Town Council representative for the North Bucks planning, Parishes Planning Consortium East-West Rail Group. This is a group that's been put together by the NBPPC. Jeff Culberhouse asked, has asked all parishes if they are interested in joining the group and if so, could we please appoint a representative, councillor Harvey?
Can I politely inquire whether Sue would be interested in that? Given that you're pretty closer to it than anybody else on this committee, physically obviously, just a thought.
Councillor Heatherington, welcome to the committee by the way and congratulations on your election.
Thank you, I'm not actually a member of this committee. I don't know if that would permit me to be on this East-West Rail.
Have you thought about joining it?
I think, as you say, we do have a great deal of issues in the Gorka area with East-West Rail. So I would be interested.
And just to, sorry if I made chair, just to clarify that it's not essential to be a member of a committee to take that appointment, but obviously somebody taking the appointment, we would be kind of expected to at least report back to the committee on any particular items of interest.
Are you saying yes, you would be happy to do that then?
Yes.
Good, second for that then please, if councillor Harvey's proposing it?
Robin's got a hand I think at the moment as well.
Councillor Stutchbury?
I'm quite happy to say that, I know from our conversations, Sue and I have talked about many issues. It's something that she will bring a lot of enlightenment to this subject. She's got a really good understanding of the impacts of it and I think she'll add some of it. So I'll second her on that basis that I think she'll bring something really fresh to the table, something we haven't heard.
Thank you, and any other proposals for that position? No, in that case, I think, just like to indicate by hand that everyone's in favour of that. Yeah, that appears to be unanimous Paul, so Sue, thank you very much indeed and
Thanks Sue.
That's that one done, good, that brings to item nine, planning application, sorry Catherine?
Can I just draw members' attention to the last item on the action list on page two, which I had had as a separate item and the town clerk has snuck in at the bottom of my action list?
The action list.
Thank you Catherine.
I have to write back to this lady, so I'd like a decision from the committee on it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, which one are we looking at?
It's the Lace Hill care home, we wanted to change the name, they don't like what we suggested.
Yeah, the last item on the action list, yeah. Councillor Harvey?
They've not rejected Lace Hill Manor, have they?
No, they have suggested Lace Hill Manor.
I didn't go for that, I think that sounds good.
Okay, we'll agree with that then.
Everyone happy? Good, thank you, thank you Catherine. So item nine, planning applications, Catherine has put together her suggestions and comments on these applications, if we start with number one, which is 25 Hilltop Avenue, this is on page hill, it's a two-storey side extension, parked garage conversion, dropped curb and crossover to a new parking area. This is actually an amendment to an approval we'd already raised no objection to. It would mean having a loss of their front lawn by that you having put another parking space in the front there, councillor Tri?
Then councillor O'Donoghue? Thank you very much, yes, I don't have any objections to the building work as is, what I do object to is the further extension to the drop curb and the spacing of their cars, as you have just said, removes that very small amount of green area there anyway. And also, I think by the drop curb, they then become almost the owners of that little piece of road in front of them, which means nobody else can park along that road, you know, because of the drop curb. So I would object to that and I think there's enough room, looking at the picture, the realistic picture, that they can get three cars on there anyway, I mean they just have to squeeze up. And that will keep the greenery, it will keep the drainage and it will keep some of the road curbing as well.
Thank you Martin, Lisa?
Thank you, yeah, I kind of agree with what Martin said about the car parking spaces, but the greenery, it looks like it's on their land. I could be wrong, but it looks like part of their front garden. So if they want to do away with that, I think that's up to them. I don't have an issue with the application, I think it's fine as it stands. So happy to recommend, we agree this one.
Thank you John.
Well, I mean unless they've got three vehicles, they won't be using it anyway, they're probably trying to extend that to ensure there's adequate parking spaces for the newly sized house that will be there. Frankly, I don't, I think there's room, if you had a, but if you're on Lacy, they'd have less than that anyway, wouldn't you? But I mean, I think there's adequate space there for three vehicles if they wish to choose to do that. But I suspect they're not going to go out and just buy another car, just to park it on their newly enlarged parking space, unless they go by a camper van like I did, but you know. But yeah, I don't have a problem with this.
But there might be two adults and then a teenager who's just learning to drive, we don't, we don't, councillor Ralph?
Thank you chair, just could we make a note on it that we'd like to see it's a permeable surface, they're making extension and this is a sort of thing perhaps we can put on any of our future views, so it's a standard item on how the town feel about it.
Yeah.
And is the drainage channel that now mandatory, Catherine?
I don't think it's mandatory and I have a feeling, I mean I took that photograph almost a month ago now, but I think that the ground actually slopes towards the garages, so it's not going to go onto the road anyway.
Right, okay. Carolyn?
Thank you, yes, and we definitely felt that the surface should be permeable and I did get in touch with the owner, they're intending to put block paving there and I think that's not very permeable. It would be good if we could have it designed in some shape or form that at least it drains into a hedgerow perhaps between 25 and the neighbour. And I don't think it drains to the garage as I remember it, because I have been there. And I thought it drained into the road. And I'm sure they will be draining into the road.
Well, in that case, I mean they're going to follow highways regulations, so if it's going to drain that way, highways will insist on a slatted thing.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, but I think the principle of permeable surfaces for driveways is something that the society would like to see certain.
Thank you, now councillor Tri did actually propose that we objected to on the grounds of the the extending the drop curve, which means that it exclude anyone else from parking in front of the property. Is there a second for that? No, what's the feeling of the meeting then? That we approve the application but with the rider that there should be permeable surface for the parking?
Yeah, I propose that we agree this one.
Okay, everyone in favour? Thank you. Anyone against? One against, any abstentions? On abstention, thank you councillor Stutchbury. Thank you, item two, it's 32 Nelson Street. This is the former Royal Oak Public House, it's a grade two listed building. We asked, we sent it back saying there wasn't enough information, heritage agreed with us and heritage at Aylesbury actually want more information still, they want further investigations and a comprehensive justification for any potential harm through loss of historic fabric and plan form and also they want an amended proposal for the front door flood barrier. So at the moment, we, I don't know if anyone has any feelings about the actual internal works, but it's possible that, you know, we might agree to that as long as they comply with what the heritage officer wants. Councillor Harvey?
I think you've said it, chair, I mean I think if they comply with what the heritage officer says, I don't see a problem with any of this frankly.
Thank you, anyone else? Councillor O'Donoghue? Did you want to speak or you're just reaching?
No, I just turned my iPad back up because I had a phone call, sorry.
So is that the feeling of the meeting then that we we don't, you know, we have no problems with this, so long as the heritage officer is following, thank you for that. Item three, land at Tindric Road, St Rumbold's Fields, this is a variation of condition on a number of the houses there. Barrett David Wilson have not been able to obtain some of the materials they wanted to do this job and so there are some colour changes there. Anyone have any comment on that? Councillor Harvey?
This is going to make quite a difference, I think, if I've understood it correctly, looking at the plan that you've reproduced Catherine, that means quite a few houses on the horizon will show up with red roofs in a way that may be out of kilter, with a large other parts of the town. We don't really have many houses with that sort of colour roofs. And if you're going, if you're driving back along the Brackley Road towards town, you will see those roofs from that road if you're looking south. So I struggle to understand that they can't find roof tiles that are a bit more in keeping with the town, frankly. roof tiles that aren't a bit more in keeping with the town, frankly.
Did the Buckingham Society have a view on this? Carolyn?
I have to say, we've felt so fatigued by all variations of this, that and the other coming back from David Wilson's house, who rather threw up our hands and congratulated Catherine on the on the excellent report that she's done as normal. I think there are red tile roofs in the town, but I totally agree with Councillor Harvey, actually, the point he makes that it's going to be very visible from the Brackley Road and probably at that, on that position, those red tiles will stand out more than slate. But we didn't actually have any particular views on it.
Catherine, could we just ask what they were going to be replacing? Did you mention something about a blue tile?
Well, if you look on page six of the report, you will see that they did have three colours, a grey and an orange and a sort of brown. And now they're going to add this red one in where they're not being able to source enough tiles. But they're still keeping with the grey and the orange and the brown.
Thank you. Councillor Try.
Thank you. Could they not just use all the red ones on the smaller estate extension? And then that would be away. Then you just group them all together. Then you've got a, you know, a group of red roofs then? I don't see why they've scattered them.
I think it's a part of the problem that we've tried to avoid having groups of colours, you know, things spread out a little bit more. Councillor O'Donoghue.
Thank you. And I mean, the UK is known to rain a lot and with that grey comes to mind. So this might give a bit of like a Mediterranean feel, a bit of a warmth to the town by being like terracotta and red and it might bring a bit of life. You know, grey and slate slab brown are a bit dull. So I'm quite happy with the changes.
Thank you, everyone. So how do you like to go with this?
Agree.
Agreed? Yes. Do we need a vote on this? Is anyone against it? No, we'll agree as it is. Thank you very much, everyone.
Obviously I'll abstain, Chairman.
Yeah, oh, thank you, thank you. I'm sure Nina will note that everything you'll be abstaining on. Thank you so much. Just to say really about the Rumbolds development, that, you know, we have had a very good ongoing relationship with Barrett David Wilson. And they do come back to us with every little thing, which is why, you know, every detail they come back to us. So that is much appreciated.
Yeah.
Application number four is number two, Ren Close, which is on the bottom of Badgers, opposite Borton Mill. This is regarding, it's a retrospective application for a fence, which is 2.3 metres high, which goes against our town guide of 1.8 metres. Catherine?
It's not that end of Badgers Way, it's the bypass end at the south. As you're coming from the southern bypass, it's slap bang facing you.
My apologies for that. So you can see the pictures before and after. Thank you, Councillor Ralph, for your photograph taken in February and below his height was in 2009, which of course is now 12 years ago. But you can see there is a big difference and the house next door to it has also raised its fence during that period. What do members feel? Councillor Ralph?
Well, as I've sort of obviously noted it and it's passed through, it does seem somewhat oppressive and it doesn't comply with our requirements. And it requires planning permission and that's what it's going to get.
Thank you. Councillor Try.
I was going to say the opposite actually, you know, considering it's there on a T junction. Maybe the fence is not the best with the concrete pillars in between. And not as well painted as it was at the beginning, which would maybe tone it down a little bit. But I don't have a problem with it myself.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this? So are you making a proposal, Councillor Ralph, that we oppose it on the grounds of the height?
Yes, I think, I think so, yes.
Could I have a second for that? Yeah, second to Councillor Harvey. Thank you. Let's put that to the vote then. All those opposing it. One, two, three, four, five. Those against? One, two against. Abstentions? Councillor Stutchbury, thank you. So that is carried. We do oppose that then. Do we want? Is that an oppose and attend if necessary?
It's up to members to decide whether it's worth, by then it might be a trip down to Aylesbury.
For the sake of offence.
Well, that's exactly it. Is it worth the the trip to Aylesbury? Because, you know, we're going back to having proper meetings. Then planning committees, I mean, there isn't a planning committee till the end of June. So by then, we should have a decision either way.
Yeah. Councillor Ralph?
I think the fact that it's required to have planning permission, whether it gets it or not, I think is sufficient. I'm of the opinion, following on from what Catherine said, that we've got to be careful not to bring trivial things to oppose and attend and say that as a big gun when it's really, really important.
So we just oppose it then. Everyone happy with that? Thank you very much. Application number five is number nine, West Fields. This is the first floor extension, ground floor, front and side extension. You've seen the photographs in Catherine's document that this part of Buckingham has seen a lot of change over the years. So there is no actual street seen to be spoiled now. It all looks quite good to me, and I think the feeling generally would be that this won't make much difference, what the members think. Yeah. Is everyone happy with that? Sorry, Lisa?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think this is fine and happy to agree.
Thank you. So no objections to that one. Number six, this is the only application we have tonight that has not had a stat which you noticed put up yet. So it'll be subject to comments coming after our meeting tonight. It's Wilmore in Stratford Road. This is the lay-by at the top of Stratford Road, quite close to the bus stop. It's a part single story and part first floor rear extensions and replacement lean-to roof. It is a detached house. And this is all behind it.
Semi-detached.
Semi, I'm sorry, semi-detached. I apologize, yeah. What do members feel about this one? Lisa?
Yeah, I think they've got the space up there, Chairman. So happy to agree this one.
Thank you. Everyone agreed that? Thank you. And then amended plans. Number seven is 57 Burley Place and 17 Pittford Walk. This is the takeaway and shop in Linden Village. We already had no opposition to the former plans. They've now address and description corrected it. Vehicle outlines added to rear yard on site plan and a pitch roof, half of the flat roof. Catherine did point out in her comments, it's got a very strange angle in it, but that may not be a planning reason to oppose it. What do members think of that one?
Yeah, I think we can without original objections.
Fine. So we continue that, no objections?
Yeah.
Not for consultation, eight and nine. This is a true house. This is purely an upstairs change of use with some internal alterations only. It's an application for a lawful development certificate as well. Does anyone see any problem with that?
No, not true.
Thank you. No objections to that. The number 10 has been approved already. This is a removal of a spruce in at 11 Chandos Road. There's a number of tree applications there, which some must be applied to by email. The one that continued to give concern was number 14. That was the Maple Tree in Cromwell Court and Foscat Way. This was one of a group of four. They, the insurers of the house had applied, sold three of them because of suggested damage, alleged damage to the property. They forgot to apply for permission for the fourth. Everyone replying by email came back and said, no, they missed it too late. But Neil Passmore, who's the tree officer for Buckinghamshire Council, came back and said that basically he's, we have to do that because otherwise the council could be laid open to all sorts of insurance implications and claims. So that has been approved against our wishes. Councillor Harvey?
I do think with this, this needs looking into. I've said this before. I think insurance companies, and I think this is maybe something we can approach NALC about. Because I'm very worried that insurance companies are taking easy ways out here. Maybe just seem to be doing something. But I'm not sure it'll actually solve the problem because we know what the problem is on Page Hill. It's more to do with the geology than it is to do with the tree roots. And I just wonder whether we could make some contact with NALC and find out if this is a growing problem. That somehow insurance companies are kind of hooked into this and are just destroying trees all over the shop. Because honestly, I think the distance, the way, the distance between the tree and the house. I mean, you know, normally when you look at a tree, the roots go as sort of far wide as the tree itself does. And it was just kind of like a mirror image, which means that the roots that are getting into, you know, as far as they are wide on the tree above, are very, very small roots and probably doing no damage at all. And probably won't go any damage because the tree's not going to grow that much more. I just, I just worry that this is a trend that we've got to somehow stop.
Let us make the point, item 15 tonight is about this, an application to sell trees and to consider proposals that Councillor Ralph's put forward. So if we could, we can discuss that tonight, Councillor Harvey, if that's right with you. Thank you. Councillor Stutchbury?
I think for you, Chairman, we had, we had agreed earlier last year that we were going to start cataloguing these type of applications because there is a challenge, isn't there, to the broader environment? And the fact that we are, the policy of Buckinghamshire Council is to plant presumably 500,000 trees, which taking these trees out through planning seems to be running contrary to what they sound their environmental policies. So I think we need to gauge how we approach this in the long run, because if this becomes an easy option, as been suggested by both yourself and Councillor Harvey, that they keep going down this route, the skyline of Buckingham will change over 10 years. The place that it actually is now will be gone. Because you could use these arguments presumably for any tree, rather like the arguments for demonstrations now, that if you make a noise, someone can claim that you're spoiling their day and you can be prosecuted. So I think we do need to write to them and ask them for the legal framework that they're operating in as a council. Or what resilience they're putting into that in keeping with their own agreed policies on the environment. Because if they're not operating in line with their own recommendations to council, which they've agreed in the last cycle, then they shouldn't be doing it. So I think we have to ask them, is it in breach of their own environmental policies? Because this argument's going to go on and on and on. It won't be the last time we get an application like this. And eventually, some trees of significant note in the town will be the next ones to go. And it's better to ask these questions now so we can throw them back at them at a later date.
Yeah, if I could just reiterate, Councillor Stutchbury, that is what item 15 tonight is about, about asking what the criteria is, et cetera, et cetera. If we could deal with that then. Councillor O'Donoghue?
Thank you. It does feel a little bit like Groundhog Day because everything that Councillor Harvey and Stutchbury have said tonight has been said in previous meetings, probably by Councillor Harvey and Councillor Stutchbury. And we have already started noting what trees are being removed. It was something that I asked for meetings back. So it is, we are keeping a record of them, gentlemen. I know that Catherine is doing that and we were having it on the agendas. So it is being noted and we definitely need to keep an eye on the ball because it is a massive problem. And it seems clear from what Neil Passmore has said is that they're afraid of insurance companies claiming against the council. So they're not really thinking about the environmental aspect when they're thinking about money. If that's what their issue is here, is that they're worried about being sued because they're not keeping or maintaining the trees that they've got in town. That isn't our fault. That isn't the household's fault. But the environment is going to suffer because of it. So yeah, I'm glad it's on the agenda again tonight, but it does feel a bit like Groundhog Day.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey?
Well, yes, obviously I've mentioned this before, but I think it is a new thing to say. I think we ought to ask NALC, our national body, this is a growing thing. I don't think I've said that bit before. But I remain concerned and obviously I note that we are keeping an eye on this.
Yeah, I'll support that, John. You haven't said that before.
And I think, and I think we should be trying to link up with other parish and town councils or other authorities to see what they're doing about this. Because as I say, this is a trend that I worry is happening across the country. Maybe contact the, I don't know, the insurance body or representative professional body for insurance companies and say, are they having discussions and have they thought about the environmental impact as well? It's not a very green thing. It's not a very carbon neutral thing to be doing, cutting down trees.
Could I just say once more, this is on the agenda later tonight. Thank you very much, everyone. Yeah, so there's a pre-application request for comments, item number 17. This is the highway verge at Gorkop Road roundabout. They want to put a base station and you've seen Catherine's report, I'm sure, with the pictures of quite comprehensive documents and pictures of what it would look like. They need this because they can't share the current one there at the moment. And it's going to be quite high. But it will be well clear, as you can see from the plan, well clear of the road, of the footpaths and not in a not in a dangerous place for traffic. This is a pre-application request, but might be as good a time as any to make any comments anyone wants. No? So everyone happy with that? We will get that before us again, obviously. Thank you for that. Item 10, planning decisions. You'll note there that a number of decisions that we didn't object to have been approved. One of them, which I think is of concern to us, is Two Chandos Close, direction of offence to Boundary. We just saw the one for Ren Close tonight. We opposed direction of offence at the Boundary to Two Chandos Close on the fact it was over 1.8 metres. It was 2.2 metres. We made a number of planning objections to it. ABDC policy GP35 and merging policy BE2 of VALP. The planning officer came back, ignored what we'd said. She said it met all their policies, DHE2 and E5, which are about ecology and biodiversity. As far as GP35, she said it does not go against respecting the complementary site and tradition, et cetera. And she completely ignored our thing about BE2. It's of concern that because everything we've put forward as planning reasons, she ignored and put a number for her own. And I just wonder if this might be a view of the future for us. Okay, no comment? Thank you. Right. Item 11, Buckinghamshire Council members to receive news of Buckingham Council, new documents and other information from council members present. Councillor Stutchbury, I don't see any other Buckinghamshire councillors here tonight.
It's a change as they've missed their opportunity, haven't they? Just to inform you, I came out of a meeting tonight. Uh, I should be working with a group called Impact Alliance um, in Buckinghamshire Council. It's a, it will be a group of thirteen councillors, a baker's dozen. Um, we have got councillors pretty much everywhere um, over Bucks, except ours, Bree unfortunately. Um, but, um, we will probably be um, priming ourselves on areas of environment, areas of planning and such like on, on a scrutiny basis. And we will be able to cover all the social committees within our group. That group is a irregular group with no whip, no standing orders, in the sense that we are not operating along normal party lines where every one person says something and none of the others can talk about it. With such a strong membership from independent councillors, it's, it's only right that many of them reflected on real issues to do with their area that they can actually express themselves. We will be involved in strategic development control. And we will be uh, involved in planning. So but I mean, it's a new day. I come out of a group meeting tonight. It was one of the easiest meetings I've ever been to with a group of eight people. There was more about what we can do, not what you can't say. And, and we, it, it, it's, it's going to be there. They will make contact with various people, be societies and parish council and town councils. Because we're not primarily there to be, uh, we're there to be the people's friend and, and that's our purpose is to take issues and represent where we can within the strengths we've got within the grouping. I, 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 I will offer some assistance to the group. And the leader of the group will be Stuart Wilson, who's an independent councillor. I should be deputy in the group. And my primary purpose of this is to make sure that people's voices are heard when these challenges come up to the community. That's what we're there for. On Wednesday, we will find out, believe it or not, they even tonight at this eleventh hour, they were not willing to divulge who the cabinet members are anywhere. Like it's, um, all going to wait for the big surprise on Wednesday. For council meeting, which will be a um, a, a meeting of canaries. Um, we are all going into a public face meeting. And we are, and I think if we survive the year um, of canary meetings, um, maybe government will start meeting in Parliament. Um, who knows, in the similar vein. Um, but we're there for you. There will be contacts made in official channels to the office. Um, as I say, it, it, it's primarily a functioning working group um, of like-minded people who are interested in social minded issues and planning. There will be political decisions within that group, but we're not having whips and we're not telling people they can't say what they feel. Um, that's how it's going to be run and, um, which is great for me because that means I can say just what I like. Not that that would have stopped me anyway, but, um, but, um, it, it, it's there. So if you have any question, happy to take him out after the meeting. I don't think tonight's the appropriate venue for those questions, but, um, obviously we will be right to the Buckingham society or I will put them in touch. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Stutchbury. So when's, this Wednesday is the first full meeting of the full council, yes?
It's correct. It's going to be one of those stand-up and applaud meetings where, um, basically we'll be all surprised that all the chairs of committees are taken bomb by the Conservative Party and we'll, gosh, well, it's what a surprise. And, um, and, and it's a legal statutory meeting and they'll announce the proportionality of the committees. The leader of the council will be announced upon us. The cabinet members will be announced upon us and we'll be all surprised that they all come from the same party. And, um, and then we'll proceed along the with the constitution we've inherited, which is flawed, which we amended briefly in the last window of opportunity in favour of planning committees, which I played dumb part in. And I think that we're four years ahead of us. And the Buckinghamshire plan will be started to be put together. This is going to be interesting times for us on planning. It's going to be interesting times for Buckinghamshire, let alone the challenge that we know which is in the place, which we've discussed. The challenge from the government's development white paper, the Cambridge Arc and all such things are going to feed into the way we do stuff. And, and it may even challenge Buckinghamshire council's rights in the sense of determining their own first development plan. Which will be really sad, won't it, irrespective of the politics, that the day that Buckinghamshire can do can the first time that Buckinghamshire has to do a development plan and balance development all over Buckinghamshire against need, social welfare, health, infrastructure, that the government may choose where those large developments go. We've discussed it endlessly in this committee. And, and two accommodations, the size of Milton Keynes, somewhere along the arc, possibly in Buckinghamshire, probably wasn't what we were requesting for us. And of course, as you well know, the, the infrastructure which they built that proposal on was called the Cambridge Expressway. And that's now gone. So I think we're going to be very busy on the council discussing these things. But I think every parish in North Buckinghamshire, South Buckinghamshire and mid Buckinghamshire is going to have an interest in this. So I think far as the planning committee goes on Buckingham Town Council, I can't imagine you're going to have a dull time for four years. Uh, and our critical friends like the Buckingham Society, Beckingsale Society, um, the Aylesbury Society and all these people are going to play a very part in this. Because never before i- in our existence has the environment got such challenge before it. And the democratic accountability of parish stroke Buckinghamshire council going to be so challenged. So we're all going to have a voice in that. And I don't think it's a political voice. I think it's a voice for reason. So if that helps, it helps. But as you can imagine, I'm all fired up and raring to go.
Thank you very much, Robin. Anyone got any questions for our Shire councillor here tonight? Yeah, just that, what Ron has just been saying, it might be worth mentioning in our next interim council meeting, we will be looking for a representative to serve on the North Bucks Parish, Parish's, um, planning consortium. So have a think about that. Um, we will need someone to replace Paul Harens. Paul did a really good job for us. Not only as a member, but as chairman for several years. So eleven two, applications to be called in. We have none, Catherine? Thank you. And eleven three, an updated list of undecided oppose and attend call-in applications. You've no doubt all seen the list that Catherine's done. It's worrying. It's now gone to three pages, hasn't it? Anyone?
You haven't seen it?
Yeah. Councillor Harvey?
Oh, this list will now be redundant, won't it be? Under the new constitutional change, we are now going to be allowed to go directly to the planning department and request that a, um, a particular application is called in. We don't need to go via local councillors anymore now, do we? I thought.
We don't know.
Can I help you with that? Robin, could I, let me help you with that. What's been agreed is the change of practice. What has to be drafted now is the terms of reference for that change. Now, the terms of reference will be key to make sure the terms of reference for the engagement of town and parish councils in the planning committee are in line with the wording of the recommendation agreed at council. So officers have got to draft those terms of reference because they couldn't draft them in advance of the council agreeing at the last, very last meeting that it was going to make a, a, a political apology for the parishes being cut out of the meetings. Uh, so that will have to be drafted. I might guess it will be June, July before we get sight of that. I think it's going to be, so I'll follow up. Um, as for the historical call-ins, I note that one was by councillor Tim Mills. Now, I think we need to establish whether those decisions taken in the previous go under that. The decisions they were taken, the call-ins will probably have to go forward as call-ins because they were taken on one legal parameters. What we need to establish is what we do with the call in which councillor Mills have got, the one that he had against him, because it was quite a major one. Now, it could be that Catherine's holding a pennant very wisely at me. She may have the answer to that question.
Thank you, Robin.
If I may, chairman, councillor Stutchbury has that already on his email.
Yeah.
The answer is that all call-ins will stand and they will be offered to all Shire members for the area when it comes to committee. Don't all rush.
So, so what you're saying is even though one's called an application in, if it's seemingly a good idea, I'll have to compete to actually speak on it. Are you, you thinking I'm going to have a rush there, like, um, of people rushing to get to the dispatch box?
Has, has assures me that councillor Mills left his reasons on paper with the file. So it's simply a question of taking over from him, I would imagine.
Well, I, I'll pick that up if necessary.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item twelve, then Buckinghamshire council committee meetings. Obviously those two didn't take place because they were election week, but it also explains part of the reason that the list of opposed applications is growing longer and longer. Item thirteen, resumption of normal hours. Um, as members are asked tonight to discuss and agree, one, whether the planning clerk should continue to produce the overview of applications report for each agenda. Councillor Harvey?
Well, I, I mean, I find them extraordinarily useful to, but I also appreciate it must take you quite a long time to put them together. I, I, and if, if you see it as being a part of your job to do this, obviously it was done during lockdown because it was any way of proceeding in a sensible fashion. But I would, I would like you to carry on doing it, but I fully appreciate it could be very time consuming as well.
Thank you, John. Lisa?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think that they are incredibly useful, um, especially if there were councillors on, on planning committee. They can pick up this report, read in-depth information without having to click every planning application link and trawling through the hundreds of documents on a planning portals. Um, so I believe that Catherine's happy to continue doing these reports. I do find them incredibly useful and would appreciate them continuing.
Catherine, are you happy to continue?
Yes. I said, because they now override amended plans onto the originals, I do have at least my own source now of the originals.
Yeah.
That's part of the problem, of course, is once a plan has been approved, all the objections disappear, don't they, from the portals? So at least we've got that record. Thank you, Catherine. Robin?
Just to say paraphrasing what I was considering, they are invaluable. They are constructive, they're informative and they are professionally produced and, and, and there's very little reason to cancel them unless you want to be less informed, less better revised and less professional. So on that basis, I think we should carry on. I find them really intuitive.
Is everyone happy with that?
Yeah.
And if we could just say, Catherine, thank you very much for doing that. And it is very much appreciated. Great help to all of us. Thank you. Um, thirteen two is whether the Monday afternoon briefing meeting should continue online for the time being or revert to an actual meeting perhaps in the chamber. We had our briefing this afternoon, those of you who attended it. Lisa?
Yeah, again, um, my thought process is having to leave the house to go out to any meetings is tiring. So going out to a planning preview meeting and then coming back home and then having an evening meeting, it is, it, it is going to be again tiring if that, if it does change. So if we can continue having them on Zoom, I would thoroughly appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah. Robin?
I think they're invaluable. And also from being completely selfish, I could log into the meeting if I'm in Aylesbury, High Wycombe or wherever I'm likely to be, if I'm free at that hour, where if I'd got to travel back to that briefing, I wouldn't get back. So, uh, uh, and the information I learn in that briefing informs me about views and, uh, uh, of the council, which is really what I should be listening to. So I think they're invaluable.
Thank you. Yeah. So everyone's happy with that then, that we will continue online for the time being. Thank you. Very good. Item fourteen, enforcement. Any new breaches to be reported? No, but if, under that, we could just raise, um, I raised it at the briefing this afternoon, what is happening with enforcement? We don't get very much feedback about what's happening. We've got three on Page Hill, two of them in Hilltop Avenue. We've heard nothing more about. I know that Catherine has mentioned in a couple of places about, um, one in, in the action that planned, for instance, she's put numbers on them. But generally, Catherine, what, why are we not getting more information from Buckinghamshire council planning on these?
They don't issue it. I mean, I can compile a list of all the ones that I haven't had a closure notice on, which will be everything we've reported since about ninety, uh, since twenty sixteen. And yes, one of their offices could be deputed to go through and at least say which ones are closed and can be archived. But there's no offering of such information. There's no means of telling us apparently when they have closed a, a case. And, and that number can be deleted from our current records. There's just no, no feedback at all.
Yeah, I, I do recall in sometime in the past when we are system and Elsbury Vale District Council has once told us that it was information that they couldn't give because it, um, because of data protection, et cetera. But
I can't see what the problem is. I don't want to know the details of the case and what the, what the accused person said. Want to know whether it's closed or not, really. Or even a, a short progress report saying this is going to need a planning application. Um, we've asked for it, that kind of thing.
Thank you. Councillor Stutchbury?
We see, we clearly need a road, a road bridge through this position. Clearly, it, it, it's, it's less than sensible and and not good practice to have a situation where we don't know whether the cases have been determined or not determined or still outstanding. So what I would suggest is um, I will work with Catherine in a week or so because I know the workload and staggering of the meetings together are very close now. This isn't a question that's going to go away. But I need to work with Catherine on what the questions are and I shall have to follow them up. Because I'm, I'm frustrated about the ones in Buckingham. Um, and I could probably remember lots of these things if I sat down and scrapped my head. I don't generally forget things. But I am concerned we've got a situation. What we could get is something happening which is erroneous and damaging because it's not actually been followed and put in force. There was a case many years ago, which probably predates everybody in the windows now, that Catherine will remind you where, apart from Caroline, actually, um, where an application actually after ten years became actually an application under the Glorious District Council because it had never been actioned as an enforcement issue. So it became legally an application that was on the Tindrit Row, um, near the river. So it actually got planning consent because of that now. So we don't really want that sort of thing happening again. So I, I think we need to properly and, and the question needs to be properly put and I'll, I will do it. And then we'll see if they don't answer me. How, how, how I deal with that. Um, um, I've got some ways of dealing with that. Um, so I think they might give me the answer. And if I get the answer, then I can give it to Catherine. Uh, and then it's something perhaps they should be updating all their Shire councillors on the progression. They've made lots of statements about how much more they're doing on enforcement. My fear is that they're probably doing a really good job compared to before on the current cases coming in. But it's the historical enforcement cases which are the ones which they're probably not got to yet. And I, I have met online, I can't think of the name now, because names isn't my strong point. But I have met the new But I have met the new enforcement officer, looked very enthusiastic and I did say to her that I wish you all the luck in the world. But you've got a mountain ahead of you and I don't think she was unsurprised. But they have got more resilience now because with Buckinghamshire Council, I think the enforcement team's going to be spread across Buckinghamshire in its totality going forward. So there may be more resilience in the future, but that don't get rid of the historical backlog of things. And we don't want an application being determined after 10 years, just on a legal criteria that nobody actually enforced it, which was the case from the district council on the Tindric Road. I can't remember the name of the actual application, it's the name, but I can remember the actual details of it. Because I don't remember names very well, but it was on the Tindric Road. Either Catherine or Caroline can actually remember the application. It was adjacent to the river on the Tindric Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, of course, it's a little bit discourteous from their end because we are the the ears and the eyes of enforcement in Buckingham. It tends to be us who makes the reports. We've heard that from Sue tonight. We've heard that from Anthony tonight. And if they don't acknowledge that and reciprocate, you know, something's wrong in the system, isn't it? Thank you anyway. Item 15, Applications to Fell Trees. Councillors Harvey and Councillor Stutchbury no doubt would be delighted to see Appendix G there, the last page in the planning agenda, showing the applications to fell trees, protected trees and those in the conservation area. That's the list that Catherine has been keeping for us. Which leads us to consider the proposal put forward by councillor Ralph. Councillor Ralph, it's in your hands.
Thank you very much. Well, as you can see from the list, my thought process is ran along the lines of, we talk a lot now about trees, both husbandry and felling and the rest of it. And equally, it's clear from correspondence from Neil Passmore that he's constrained to some greater or lesser degree. And consequently, it seemed logical if we could ask him to come and talk to us about the whys and the wherefores of how he deals with these things, it would give us a much better picture. And while we were doing that, because the Environment Committee are obviously very interested in trees and other flora, we could invite them as well. And when I mentioned it last week to some colleagues in the Buckingham Society, there was some interest shown if the invitation could be extended to them. And as I teased everybody this afternoon, if we ask any more people, we may have to hire the Alp Hall to accommodate everybody. But I wasn't joking because I see it as a Zoom meeting for convenience. And could I just ask the town clerk if we would be allowed to record that? And then have that available should we want to show other new councillors as time goes on?
Yeah, no reason why not.
Yeah, thank you. That's my thought anyway.
Thank you, Anthony. Robin?
I think that with Anthony yourself, that we need to structure that meeting very, very carefully in the sense that I can remember going to meetings in the past in Buckingham where the likes of myself, district or Buckinghamshire councillors would stand up and ask questions at those meetings, which actually prevented the very people the meeting was in therefore to actually ask you questions. So though I'm on the committee, I think the people we invite, we can tell them the meeting's taking place, but they can ask Neil Passmore all these questions any day of the week. They've only got to pick their email up and or meet the officer and he'll meet them. So we've got to make sure that this meeting is for the town council and the Buckingham Society and not for Buckinghamshire councillors to join in and ask questions, which they can facilitate elsewhere. And I if it means I have to be quiet and let you all talk, so be it. Because I've always got something to say and I'm conscious that it's your meeting, not somebody else's. So though they can listen, I don't think they should be part of the questioning. Because if they're any good as a councillor, they would realise they can ask questions anyway elsewhere if they want to, not use your forum to do it. So that's my advice. But don't exclude them from the meeting. Because then they'll say, you never invited me. But I don't think they should be part of the questioning of this meeting. It should be yours. And if I have to be quiet, so be it.
Thank you, Robin. Yes, I assume what Anthony is aiming at is it would be Buckinghamshire Town Councillors and Buckingham Society and any tree wardens who are not part of either of those groups. Neil Passmore is the audio person for this. He is local. I've known Neil all his life, basically. He grew up at home farm at Foscat, where his parents farmed. Tenants of John Pass, of John Pullen. And Neil has been very, very good for Buckingham. He's always been accessible. If there's been any tree queries, any trees that have broken need replanting, he's always been very much on the case. So we're very lucky that we do have someone like that who is at the heart of Buckinghamshire Council. So as Anthony says, I think we should use them if we can from that point of view. Lisa?
Thank you. And my hand was up for the previous item. But I've got a point on both now. So it was going back to 14.1 and the list that we have. And it was something that John said earlier about reaching out to other bodies. Have I got it right that we were going to contact the Beckinsale Field Society about trees to see if they were being felled in their area? And if so, has that been followed through? On this item 14.2, I didn't read in here that it was for Buckinghamshire councillors to ask questions, that it was for our working group, the Environment Committee members if they wanted to come along and the Buckingham Society. So, you know, I think that if Mark chairs this meeting, I think that any Shire councillors that come along that aren't on the town council, I'm pretty sure he'll curb their questioning quite well.
Thank you, Lisa. Robin? Oh, sorry. Could I ask the town clerk first, Robin? And I'll come back to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, just to note, obviously we're talking about arranging something with Neil Passmore, who isn't here to agree with us. So whatever councillors get to, are you happy to kind of delegate to myself and Catherine to work out a format and style for the meeting that Neil would be happy with? Does she mean he's up for this? So we can't kind of implement something too. And it may well be that we need a bit more of an informal meeting with Neil to explain how things work. And then after that, if councillors are unhappy with the policy of Buckinghamshire Council, then it would be for councillors to kind of reconvene and then talk to Buckinghamshire councillors about policy that Neil obviously doesn't set.
Yeah.
Robin?
Yeah, I mean, there are new opportunities here. I mean, we have got we have access to people who are environmental experts now, who are in the field, who happen to be councillors. I was talking to one today and I think that when it comes to this, the way we deal with trees and the way we deal with applications, we need to be less preoccupied or more proactive. Because I think going forward, picking up what went on in Chesham and a decision there contributed to what went on here, like John's alluded to, is going to be key. Because what we can't have them doing is applying one policy in one part of Buckinghamshire and another in another. Because if the trees and the beaches in the Wickham Woods are important, so are the oaks and the limes in Buckingham. You know, and they shouldn't be getting any different appearance. I think it's a work in progress, but I think with the Beckinsale Society and maybe the Algy Society, I think it's about getting a collection of these people together. And maybe we need to get them to maybe meet and maybe talk how they want to go forward. Because we're never going to, as I said earlier, we're not ever going to have the challenge of going to get in our lifetime again. And it's about finding friends everywhere and finding colleagues who can work. But I don't recall, we suggested having an action of contacting the Buckingham, so I don't of the Beckinsale Society, but I thought we were gonna, unless Caroline's going to correct me, I think the Beckinsale Society, the Buckingham Society were going to speak and it might have come back that way. I bet that might have been the way it was going to go. But I might be wrong on that. And if I have got that wrong, Caroline will love to correct me.
No, we did make contact, but there was nothing, actually, no action was forthcoming in the sense that we are in touch with each other quite regularly in fact. But if you're suggesting that we should actually find out what they're doing with trees, then let's push that forward.
Thank you, Caroline.
I'm sure it was, sorry Chairman, but I'm sure it was actioned on one of our previous minutes that we were going to contact the Beckinsale Field Society and it was about insurance companies applying for tree removals.
Yeah, yeah, right. So if we can leave that to Paul and Catherine then to
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Item 16, Matters to Report. Any damage, superfluous redundant signage, access issues. Councillor Harvey?
I've been having several conversations today about, because it's been running a lot in the last few days. There are still many, many storm drains that are just not being cleared since the Christmas flood. And because they're still gunned up with lots of mud and lots of jetsam. And also there is that tree down by the, you know, down by the green bridge at the back of the car park, the main car park. That these are all things that need attention and they're just not getting attention. They're not getting any priority. I don't know what TFB are doing. I don't know whether we can apply any more pressure. But, you know, for example, there's flooding on the corner of Tindric Road and Nelson Street. Today I saw it myself. There's still flooding around Linden and so on and other places too. You know, unless these drains are cleared, let alone the radical action that Terry Cavender was telling us about at a previous meeting, we're going to get the same problem again. If there's a lot of water and clearly the weather is pretty unpredictable these days, we've got to do this now. And I frankly don't understand why Buckinghamshire Council are putting huge amounts of pressure on Anglian Water to get this sorted. Or whoever is responsible, I assume it's Anglian Water, they really ought to be getting this done. It's appalling. I know they're a profit-making organisation, but you know, service to the public ought to come first.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. Robin?
If it helps, John, I mean, in some ways, Councillors of Bucks have been, I've been working with them on a couple of things in a couple of villages about where they were flooded and they have been, the Environment Agency and such like have been involved. They were specific issues. The drainage issues and sucking the gullies out. There's not enough of them gully trucks around Bucks to actually doing it. You have to make an appointment for it. It comes up, does a load of work and then disappears back safely to Martin Tech's constituency aspect. But it probably parked there permanently. But I'm just joking. I'm sure that wouldn't happen, would it? No, I'm sure that doesn't happen. It's just a joke. And but as for redundant and signs, we do have an issue about redundant signs. We have all the signs of Buckinghamshire County Council on them. And all the signs with the Algy Vale District Council on them. Are they redundant or signs? Or are we going to be green and environmental and not seek to have some of them removed? Because I remember our great friend, councillor Oisham, if you remember, he was heartbroken when all the cast iron signs were removed in the town. And Derek at the time didn't want them removed, but they were all removed with, and we had ticky tacky thin aluminium or tin signs put up saying exactly what the previous cast iron beautiful signs on the building said. So I think we have to be, some of these signs are probably going to be better than what replaces them. So it might be worth having, before they have a programme for replacing them and signposting everywhere in Bucks, whether we really want them to do that in Buckingham or whether we want to keep some of these signs because they are of historical significance. The decisions about those estates may have been taken before Buckinghamshire Council and we shouldn't have a year zero attitude to signage, like happened when the district took over. They got rid of all the historic borough signs, which were all removed. I did return one of them to the old jail some years ago. It said, ladies and gents, toilets, the old jail. I returned that personally to them because I felt that I had no use for it in my house. And I was given it as a small child's and I kept it. But I do think we need to just do some sort of audit on the thing, get a view how we do that. Because it would be environmentally friendly just to leave them up, wouldn't it? We'd save all the carbon of taking them down. It'd save all the producing a new sign. And they're not going to say anything different. The only difference is it's going to say Buckinghamshire Council on them. So I think we ought to have a discussion about what we want with that redundant signs, whether they are really redundant or whether they're part of our evolved history of the community. It's just why I'll just say that, put that out there. I might be on my own in my thoughts on it, but I'm quite happy to be there. But we should discuss it in case somebody comes along and we find one day all the signs have gone and we've got plastic signs with Buckinghamshire Council and the blue. I don't know why they came up with the colour blue for Buckinghamshire Council on it. It must have been difficult for them to come up with the colour blue. But there are lots of other colours they could have used, but they chose blue, didn't they? But anyway, that must have been a mistake. But let's just discuss that some means whether it goes to the Environment Committee or the Buckingham Society come up with a view on it. So if some change does happen, if we don't like it, we say we want to keep those signs. And I just, as I said earlier, I remember councillor Oisham bringing this on more than one occasion, it was great regret at losing all those lovely cast iron signs on our buildings. And let's not repeat the same thing again, what happened in 1974 in 2001, 2022.
Thank you, Robin. Yes, that's all noted. Any other matters to report? Carolyn?
Well, I'm not sure I was first, but I just want to bring this to the attention of this committee. The condition of April Cottage on the corner of the high street of where it leads up to the hospital. I can see councillor Mahe nodding. It's a listed building and it is getting worse and worse. And we recall that Prevent House, after many years of deterioration, the conservation officer did force the university into finally doing something about it, which to their credit they did. But April Cottage is an eyesore. There's broken windows and overgrown shrubs almost through the roofs now. I just felt that we should be aware of it and put it on the agenda. But I don't know who owns it. I don't know what enforcement can take place at this stage. But it is a listed building and it is deteriorating very badly.
Thank you, Carolyn. Catherine will have noted that. Councillor Tribe, Martin?
Thank you. There's a parking sign for Cornwall Meadows. Just on the T junction, coming from the old jail is near the floor rather than up on the post.
It's the only one beside the junction.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, councillor Ralph?
Thank you, Chair. Whether this is strictly for this little section, but I'm going to push my luck and say, a couple of things. The parking in front of the Old Town Hall, I really wonder whether we could, now we've got a new Buckinghamshire Council, we could redouble our efforts to get that sorted out. Drop bollards or planters, however we do it, it really is a bit of an eyesore and it it really spoils the street scene at that end of the road. And just around the corner from there, we have double yellow lines outside the post office. And there are so many cars that park there, they rub the painting off the ground pretty well. And I wonder if at least we can get the yellow lines reinstated with another coat of paint. And even perhaps a don't park here sign. These are all sort of things that just make the town look gently deteriorating and it could do with sorting out.
If we could just ask Catherine's advice on the Old Town Hall. Much of it actually belongs to the Old Town Hall, doesn't it?
Some of it does. There's a change in the paving. You can see one side and the other. I think what happened was there was originally a traffic order and county lost it so long ago, they can't remember what it said. I mean, otherwise there wouldn't be the big words loading bay along the edge of it, you see, if there wasn't a traffic order. It's just that they haven't been able to locate one.
Could I help you with that? My understanding is that councillor Warren Could I help you with that? My understanding is that councillor Warren White had suggested that there was going to be a traffic order sought to regularise that. Now, I can't speak for him, but the suggestion was made that that was going to be looked at. Now, it would need a new traffic order to actually sort the town or area out because of what you've said, Catherine, that's might be why we're looking. Would it be worth us writing to him and asking him if it was correct that he was looking at this? And if he was considering it, what progress he had made in it? I'm not trying to wrong foot him on this, but I do recall him mentioning something about it once. And on the issue of the redundant house, there was a neat bit of legislation took through by a forward-looking government in two thousand and seven, which was to force councils to take on the responsibilities of properties which were redundant and falling down. I don't remember the wording of the legislation. It might be worth Caroline looking that up. Because I think from my memory, there was legislation which you can go to the council and ask them to actually do it now.
A planning authority has a statutory duty to look after listed buildings in its territory.
No, I remember that well then, but I didn't.
They can serve an order on the owner to do so.
That's something that we could probably pursue and ask them to do it under them grounds with support of the Buckingham Society. Would that be a way forward addressing it? Now, I can't remember the exact wording of the act, but I remember it.
Look into that, Robin. So we.
Yeah. And I'll take some photographs as well because photographs speak more than words do.
Thank you. councillor Harvey?
I mean, right at the beginning of this section, I did raise the issue about putting some pressure on our local Shire councillors, the pressure on Anglian Water to sort out the drains, the storm drains and so on. So could we do that? Could at least a letter go to our six Shire councillors and copy in Anglian Water saying, this is a matter that needs resolution soon. It's not one that can just hang around. The longer it leaves it, the more mud that gets in there, the more risk of flooding there is if it should rain again like it did a few months ago.
I look forward to hearing the correspondence.
Everyone agreeing with that? Thank you. Yeah. I have two items here. One is the Borton Road roundabout on the A four two two. Three of the four roundabout signs have now been wiped out by traffic. It's obviously decided to go straight across. I have reported it twice on my street. Nothing's happened. The other one is the bottom of Addington Road. One of the new bollards has been knocked over already, the black iron bollards. Almost opposite BP garage. I noticed that.
I reported that several months back, councillor Cole.
Yeah, is this not another one?
No, I don't think they repaired the one that was horizontal and shifted several feet sideways.
Right.
I think somebody put it back. But I'm not sure. Paul, have we still got a local area technician?
We did have last time I checked. We've certainly got details for the local contact for TFB.
He still has a local area technician. He's corresponded with me in the past forty eight hours. So he's still there. And I won't use his name in public, but yes, he's still in a place and he's got assistance and there's a third person who is assisting them in that. So what the local area technician problem is, they haven't got the resources to hand to do what he wants to do, which means he gets all the requests to do something, but he hasn't got the resources. What he has to do is get it into a programme of work. I'm not making excuses for them. That's just the reality of what it is. But he has been, he got, I asked him to do two areas of work on the bypass. If you notice, the two areas which have been re-tarmac. The one adjacent to the Badgers estate and one on the other side where the planning patch has failed. And I managed to get him to do that during the election. So he got on and got that done. That's a noise. So he is getting stuff done because that was in a scheme where it was a failed job where they'd done it and it had definitely not come up to match. So that could get done. What we've got problems there is because it's actually got to be signed off and they've got a warranty on it. So I think let's not abuse your area technician. He's our friend. What he hasn't got is the resources. He needs to do his job. That's that is the question you need to ask your Buckinghamshire councillor. Are you going to get the resources to him to be able for him to do what he needs to do?
Yeah, I was just wondering whether it would be more effective to go straight to him rather than go through fix my street.
Yeah. You'll get told, which is the, oh, you've got to put it through the fix my streets model. And then they'll get a letter, which I get, I ignore those letters, of course I do. But but I think that you can put it through fix my streets. And I think the one that Mark said that if it's coming up, one of the problems I've had with fix my streets, and I don't know if it's just me, that quite often it was their cases resolved. And it jolly well isn't resolved. It's just been resolved because nobody's done anything. So the Borton Road one, is it the Little Roundabout, Mark?
The Mini Roundabout, yeah.
I don't tend to go out that way. My boys do. I don't because I tend to do my journeys different. But but I think we'll have to have, I'll try and look tomorrow at that if it's not raining again. And see if I can get anything. I'm not guaranteeing you, but he's been very good to me recently, mending work on the bypass going up to the Blackstreet Roundabout. Those two areas he got done for me, which I was really great about. And because I'm such a good bloke, I didn't then go out and do a press release about it during the election, saying that I'd managed to get two areas of tarmac done during the election. I thought that during Pirda, I shouldn't do that. But I don't think Buckinghamshire Council had the same decency. I think they did quite a lot of press releases during the election, didn't they? But obviously, that was not in breach of Pirda, was it? But anyway, we'll do our best for you, Mark. No guarantee for this. It's not an exact science.
Right. Okay, item seventeen, chairman's items for information. I have none except to thank the mayor for being with us tonight, Margaret. Thank you for attending, seeing how really, really efficient committee works. Date of next meeting, to decide whether to hold the next meeting on the planned date of Monday, the seventh, following the interim council, whether to hold it the following night by Zoom. We had a quick round robin at the briefing today. Lisa?
Yeah, I would opt for the Zoom meeting on the Tuesday because it's going to be on Zoom.
Thank you. John?
I've got an eval meeting on that Tuesday. So if it happens on the Tuesday, I would have to give my apologies because I've said I'm going to go into the eval meeting. So as we're all going to be up there for the interim, I personally see no reason why we shouldn't just carry on with a planning meeting that we've done in the past. But I'll go with the majority, of course.
I can't do Tuesday.
Yeah, I think our problem is going to be one of practicalities if we hold it at the Lace Hill Centre because we won't have big screens. We won't necessarily be able to get hold of internet signals to do what we need to do. Paul, could we just check with you? Is there anything against doing that?
So there is a big screen at Lace Hill. One of the screens is up there at the moment. And there's enough internet certainly for us to be able to put the images up on the screen as we have done in the past. So that would be possible up there. But obviously, the committee would be able to move in because there's a lot less of us than interim council. So it would be a bit more intimate and practical. So it can be done.
There's nothing against holding a Zoom meeting as long as we're still planning working group. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. Obviously, we need to make sure we'd be core for the meeting, but apart from that.
Right. So Lisa, you're making proposal that we hold it on the Tuesday night. Can we have a second for that? No, sir. Okay. So in that case, Robin? Robin?
I'm going to second Lisa's proposal so we have a vote on this rather than, you know, because I listened to Lisa's reasons about getting whatever to a meeting. And I did emphasise what she was saying earlier about, you know, having to whatever. So I think we need to have a vote on that because we need to make sure that these meetings are as interactive as we possibly can. And we are understanding orders agreed at council to be able to do these Zoom meetings. And and the only downside of it is officers rushing back to whatever they've got to do to do the Zoom meeting. So I could imagine they could do it from where they were in Lace Hill if they had to. Yeah. So we do it on the foreign day, like Lisa said. I'll second her proposal.
Thank you. So could we put that to the vote then? All those in favour that we hold it on Tuesday, the eighth of June at seven PM via Zoom? All those in favour?
Just man up in. Oh.
One, two, three, four. I make that.
Those against?
One, two, three.
Three and abstentions?
One abstention.
So that's carried. We do hold that meeting then on Tuesday, the eighth of June at seven PM.
That's a good job you had a vote then, wasn't it?
Thank you, chaps.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you to our, thank you to Sheena, who we haven't heard a word from tonight, but she's been thank you to Nina. Thank you, Catherine. Thank you very much, Paul. And we'll see.